It's 5:30, so a call to order this meeting for Monday, February 3rd, 2020. Here at the City Council Chambers. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Rife.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunstness.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman. Here, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be to approve the last week's minutes for January 27th, 2020's meeting. Can I get a motion to do that?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Remley and a second from Olson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye or nay. Minutes are approved. Next we've got the open forum. We've got one registered speaker here today, Abby McQuillan, in regards to the Melgar traffic issue. So Abby, we'll have you take a spot at the podium if you'd be so kind.
Sure.
And you'll be delighted to know that Rob and Bob Zine will be giving a little presentation on Melgar traffic here this evening. I asked them if you'd do it right away so that you wouldn't have to stick around with us for the whole time.
Awesome. Well, I basically just, my husband had said that it was going to be a topic of discussion, not on the agenda, but just, you know, talked about, and I thought it would be good to kind of voice our side of things from our neighborhood. All our neighbors and I, just every morning during the weekday, the traffic is horrible if you're trying to get out from Melgar. If you're coming from Lawson, trying to get out in Melgar, it's just really hard. Basically, I had said in the email, you know, to get out, oftentimes you make risky turns that you probably wouldn't otherwise in any situation, but otherwise you would be sitting there for, you know, 10, 15 minutes and it's just, you know, it just makes it really hard and dangerous in the mornings. And then, not only that, but just, you know, when I get home and if I like try to go to the park in the summertime and cross Melgar, that can be really hard because there's no sidewalks at a certain point in our neighborhood to get to Melgar, and then crossing is also a challenge. So I just wanted to make it aware, you know, for people that aren't in that neighborhood or aren't over there in the mornings during the weekdays, it just is, huh, it's just very, you know, in, it's just not fun to have to deal with.
And most of us may not know where you live, so why don't you tell us?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't start with that. I live in the Happy subdivision by Central High School, so we're right off of Melgar and Lawson, and so it's that, I think it's Lawson and Merton are the ones people are exiting that neighborhood from. So that's where I've noticed. But I also know kind of by the soccer fields and then Melgar Park. I know people have a hard time getting out of those two. I see people stop when I eventually do get out, I see people stopped trying to get, you know, out from those lanes too, so.
So to summarize your recommendation?
Well, to summarize, I don't, I realize that a lot of people probably don't want to see any traffic stops along Melgar because it's convenient to go all the way, but I would, I mean, I'm not sure of the laws and everything, but if there could even be lights that would just be like during those peak times before and after school, I think it would help greatly. So I'm not even suggesting there has to be any type of like traffic light all day long, just be those peak times where all the traffic coming to Central High School is taking place. And so again, I don't know the laws if that's possible, but I think the four-way stop that's down farther on Second Street is all, is illegal now, and maybe it was grandfathered in, so I know that might not be an option, but even something like that would be helpful. If it wasn't illegal, I don't know if it is. But if it weren't, if I was incorrect, I would suggest that too.
Thank you, Abby. So we're gonna kick it over to Robyn, who will tell us about the study, and then if you want to stick around for a minute, we can be sure that any questions that you might have would be addressed as well. Robyn?
Okay, well, Abby, I've, believe me, I've heard these concerns maybe hundreds of times. That may be just a bit of a stretch, but I know that just about everybody down there shares your concern. We have spent a lot of time down there looking and watching, trying to see what kind of delays, and it becomes difficult because most of the mornings that I've been down there, and I consider that morning time to be much more difficult than the afternoon. But the morning time, there are, you can see people doing some risky things at times on that north-south traffic. The difficulty is when you look at the warrants for putting additional traffic control in. And if you recall back two years ago at the presentation that Lynn did on a lot of our infrastructure work that we would be looking at, I did say that I thought that that would be an intersection that probably is, something's gonna have to be dealt with sooner than later. That's why we had a traffic study done. We did not do it ourselves. We had somebody who does this for a living, Infrastructure Design, which is a group that we've known for a long time, went through this study, and they looked at the two intersections for us, both Lawson and Second Street. What they're finding though, the difficulty is you have to have, you have to meet certain warrants in order to really put up four-way stops, to put up, I don't know that that was ever done on Second Street, but it was something that was done long before I came here. It's been a long time since that Second Street intersection was signaledized for those peak hours. And I think primarily it was done so that kids could walk to Simmons from that Eisenhower Circle area. We do recognize that there are families that are gonna wanna go to Sunshine Park on Lawson Street. Mr. Rux has talked to me about that as an example. Bottom line is that there are a lot of things to consider here at this point, the fact that the east-west traffic is so much heavier than the north-south traffic. I think the north-south traffic, we had peaks of about 85 vehicles during that one hour. So during your peak hour versus, excuse me, if you look at north and south, you'd have 175 total, okay? On the east-west, you're almost at 1,000. And that's, that's why it becomes difficult to do this because if you signalize, or if you put in a four-way stop, the level of service of that intersection goes from an A. It currently functions as an A, even though the, especially the south leg is delayed. The overall intersection goes way down in level of service because you're stopping so many people east-west. So that is not the greatest way of doing things at this point. Once we have more traffic, and hate to say it, I don't want to see more accidents, that's, but at this point, we only had, I think, three accidents over a three-year period. It wasn't, there weren't too many accidents, and that was what was surprising. I'm not, people apparently are doing a decent job of slowing down just enough to let people sneak by north-south, but the delays are not long enough at this point to make it warranted to do much of anything, other than we did talk about seeing if we could put in a left-turn lane on Lawson, so at least the people going straight through would not be impeded by a left turner, so we could separate those lanes. That might help some. It won't, it probably won't help the left turners at all. That's, that's the difficulty. The north, the people that are going north out of there probably would be able to get out a little quicker, and that would be of some help, but the actual left turners are still gonna have the same difficulty that they currently experience. Some things that we also are observing is that people are taking maybe a right turn out of there just to get back into the flow of traffic instead of trying to cross traffic. We'll see an occasional vehicle cross in from the neighborhood, go into the church parking lot, come out their driveway to the west of Lawson, just so that they can avoid being caught in the additional traffic that's already there. Bottom line is that the recommendation at this point is the delays are not sufficient to do anything, and that we want to monitor, and it will eventually happen. I will put it that way, but at this point, there's not the warrants to be able to go further. One of the things that Councilman Rux did talk to me about today was the idea of maybe at least getting some kind of pedestrian safety improvement there. We possibly could look at a pedestrian crossing signal like we have on South Fifth Street at 15th Avenue, or it's the same one that we have up by the Y on State Street and First Avenue. Those are, it's a part-time function that actually might provide some really good safety for anybody using it as a pedestrian. It would not help the vehicular traffic, however.
Robyn, you'd been mentioning a Level A roadway. Could you explain that to us?
When you have a level of service A, that means there are basically no significant delays for traffic, and that's, so your east-west traffic being so much larger in volume, it creates an overall function of that intersection, functions pretty well, with the exception of the people that are on that north-south piece. You get down to a level of service E, your delays are nearing 50 seconds. You get to a level of service F, it goes beyond 50 seconds, where, and during part of that time, we're at a D or an E.
And including turn lanes on the existing roadways, would that require them to be made more wide, or is there the space already?
The space is there already.
And that's, that was the people traveling north on?
For the northbound, and we could do one more thing and put in a right-turn lane, but I, I would be surprised if there are a lot of people taking a right turn off of Lawson, and I would think if they're gonna take a right turn, they'd move over to Merton to make that traffic, that movement anyway, so.
Abby, have you got any particular questions as it relates? Probably not the information you were here to hear, unfortunately.
No, I don't have any questions, but yeah, of course, we'd love to see something happen, but if it's not, you know, it's not time yet, I understand.
And the primary function of the study that was done, those guys observed vehicle traffic counts as well as other information?
They actually, they set up cameras so they could actually count all the vehicles in each direction and make sure that they knew what was happening over the course of an entire period of time, not just setting up somebody and having them there for that bad hour. They were looking at warrants over the course of an entire day, two days.
And was Abby correct in saying that the intersection handling on Second Street is illegal, or what is that?
The, the method that is set up right now is not what would be prescribed under the current MUTCD. That would be correct.
Sure. Go ahead, Councilman.
What would be prescribed?
It would be different type of signage.
So the flashing light would not be something that we would use?
It would be a different type of flashing light. It would probably be something that you would know that the east-west is, has to stop, as well as the north-south. Right now, when those flashes go on, everybody just knows how it functions, and there's no indication knowing whether anything is an east-west yellow versus a north-south red. You don't know that, other than the fact that you've used it for the last 30 years.
So what level of service is that intersection at? I did look at the report, but I can't remember it. It's very-
At Lawson?
No, at Second and Melgar.
Overall, it's an A.
So they did not break it down by-
They do have it broken down. There was a period of time, I think it was at a level of service C, for some of the north-south, or for some of the traffic movements because of the delays that were causing for east-west. But we're adding a whole, we're adding a couple, 200, 300 more vehicles east-west by the time you get over to Lawson, and that's why Lawson Street 1 is more difficult to do as a four-way stop. Then it really messes things up.
How long, so, so how long do you think the vehicles are held up at Second Street? I mean, it seems like traffic flows pretty nicely there.
The stuff to the west, I believe, is more significant delays, but they're having to stop at Fifth Street and Melgar already.
Right.
So you've already got some of that traffic metered out, but it's a pretty steady, pretty steady delay, and that traffic is delayed all the way to the west of Fifth Street sometimes in that peak hour.
So how many accidents do we need in that corner in order for us to do something?
I, I don't know that I've got that answer for you, but one a year is not going to do it.
How many cars have you got, Dave?
Too many. But I know that it, I mean, when I go by there, it's a, it's a challenge even on South Lincoln Street, and that's at 7:30 in the morning. Abby, what time do you head out? What time are you usually hitting that-
Usually 7:30 as well, so.
Yeah.
And then one other, I guess, point to say as well, that when there's snowfall or any kind of like icy precipitation the night before, it is almost like you have to wait so much longer, and then it's like twice as dangerous because you have to, you know, beat your, why, yes, my car anyways, it doesn't have four-wheel drive, so I have to, you know, it takes me a little bit to like get my car going, and then you can't even make those like risky turns. You basically just have to sit there and, you know, unless you drive and go right, but, you know, it's just, um-
So is, is traffic behaving, are they, are they going pretty close to the speed limit? Do we patrol that in the morning at those times, chief?
Want me to wave in here? So I raised my hand, and you can parse this out a little bit. I have two different interests. You know, I see the traffic trends, and also I live down there. So every morning I see the traffic, and I see many, many near collisions. I see a lot of dangerous driving behavior. I wonder if the study addressed how, did they just look at Lawson Street? Because every morning I see a lot of traffic that goes to the west into the church parking lot and uses that entrance to get onto the road, and there's just a lot of concerning behavior, and it's my personal belief we need something to stop traffic. We need, you know, it's something to be able to break this up and allow people to leave that subdivision in a safe way. The delays, I've counted sometimes, I've been there, up to five to eight minutes sometimes waiting, and I agree with you that the element of the winter driving, the ice adds another complexity of the safety. We get a lot of complaints during school time about people that are driving on Melgar because of the kids as they leave the parking lot. So you've got a whole sequence of events. You've got, you know, traffic as you talk about further to the west, as it gets to Lawson, the Merton, and then nears the school. The other thing that I think that we should consider is the intersection at Lawson on the north side. I think the way the slope of the road is and the way the road's designed, it, there's a blind spot or a vision obstruction when many cars stack and wanna go south onto Melgar. If you're driving a smaller car and a car's next to you to the west, you can't see, and I see a lot of times, people have to wait there a long time and they have to jump out onto that roadway. A lot of kids, you know, walk on those sidewalks, and the crosswalk element is an issue I think we need to consider. And we did a trail survey not too long ago, and that was one of the primary things identified as a safety and major concern for that intersection. So I kinda, I'm like, I told, and I'm not an engineer, I don't understand what Robyn's saying, and I'm sure it makes great sense, but I think there's a huge safety element down there. And, you know, wearing two hats in this argument, you know, being a parent, seeing kids leave that intersection, and being a police chief, I don't wanna wait till there's an accident to have to deal with this. I think we can do something. We talk about traffic volumes. Third Avenue has a lot of traffic on it. Eighth Avenue has a lot of traffic on it, and there's multiple sequences of lights there to stop traffic. So I think we should consider this and listen to the people living in that area.
Councilman Olson, you have a question? I'll get to you.
I appreciate the chief comments and Abby's as well, but this study that we had done, why do we have to follow their recommendations? Why can't we follow our own feelings and recommendations from our chief or anyone else in the community to, to ensure safety of the public? We just spent $50,000 here a week or two ago for a mower that's probably gonna protect one or two guys. I'm willing to, you know, support something that's gonna protect those people down in that subdivision, and I'd like to know what our chief recommends, and what you personally, Robyn, recommend.
What I don't wanna do is have unintended consequence where we improve something in one intersection and we make it harder in another. And that's, that's the difficulty in this. If you'll recall right on the, the discussion about the bike safety, when they talked about that, they talked about looking at the entire corridor and the effects on it. And that's what we were looking at with this, was trying to make sure that we weren't making things worse, and we will make things worse on the east-west portion. It will make it drastically better for the north-south piece. The east-west delays will be significantly worse, and that's the, that's the downside on any one of these. Certainly it will make it safer for the north-south traffic, but you will have frustration on the other side for the east-west people that are trying to get through that corridor.
Councilman Rux had a question as well.
Like I said, and this is something I've been working on for years as we've seen that subdivision fill up. There's homes still continually being developed, and as someone I know, know Dave's been here long enough, when that first Happy subdivision started taking off, the amount of kids that then moved in and grew up now, are growing up in that neighborhood, you know, the cars are a concern for me, and I think we sit there and say we don't wanna affect the whole corridor yet on Sixth Avenue. You have a street light every block, and you can be stopped at one street light and waiting across the intersection because, guess what, you can't even make it through the intersection because that other light stopped. And the same thing, I've been on Sixth Avenue heading toward Lawson Street there by Anderson Park, and I'm stopped back by Arby's because, again, the, the light and due to traffic volumes holds things up. And I think that, that's a reality in Aberdeen as we've grown. Our road system hasn't really grown, but my main concern is, is the people have no access to city, city facilities that we've invested a lot of money in, i.e. the kids down in that to get to the bike path or the Sunshine Park, which is a great park, have no safe access to cross that road. And as far as traffic, boy, I see people driving probably at least 35, 40 miles an hour. When you're near the soccer fields, it rides like a country road, so even if you're not paying attention, you notice speeds go up. I see the police patrol there all the time, and that people get pulled over for speeding. So people aren't just doing the 30 miles an hour. And, and so for me, this is something that, we do a lot of things that maybe don't make sense, but it makes life better. And I think we can find a way to do something that'll make life better, probably for everyone. Eighth Avenue probably has just as equal of car volume, and there's a lot more streetlights on it than, than Melgar. So I think there's a way, whether it's there or not, as far as a level goes, we, I think we could be forward-thinking and maybe even plan for the future, but I'd really like to see something done, at least at a minimum, to help pedestrians cross at that intersection, 'cause it's a half mile to the next one, and it's a mile to the next one.
Councilman Ronain had a question.
Thank you, mayor. I'm not sure it's even a question. Robyn, I, you know, this, this really does confirm, this conversation confirms what I have thought about, about that area, and as a, as a North Sider, I'm not sure I'm even entitled to an opinion. But, but when I've been there during rush hours, I, I too have seen what does not appear to be a satisfactory traffic pattern. I guess I would like this council to, to charge you with the, with the chore of trying to figure out some alternative to get those folks safely out of that subdivision and get people on and off of Melgar Road. And maybe it's, I, you know, Abby and I probably aren't very good engineers, but my idea was really the same one she came up with, and that is, I really wondered if having a light for, for two hours a day would be a practical alternative, at least at one of those intersections, and maybe it's not the right, right solution, but, but I guess I would like to hear you come back with some solutions for what I think most of us think is a problem.
One of the, one of the challenges, I too thought that, you know, we should do something of a four-way stop nature, and that's why I hired somebody to, to look at that, to make sure that we didn't have unintended consequences. And what they're saying is there will be some unintended consequences for the east-west traffic. We have provided similar difficulties along the 15th Avenue corridor. I've had a lot of the people that would wanna take their kids to C.C. Lee, they couldn't get onto 15th Avenue. They couldn't get up to Holgate because Dakota Street went straight through, 15th Avenue went straight through. We did put in four, you know, four-way stops there. I had a lot of complaints from the people that traveled the opposing direction, believe me.
And I guess what I'm asking, Robyn, is, I know that there may be unintended consequences. What I would like to see you do is put together a solution that minimizes those unintended consequences.
That may be a tall task, but I-
But there, if there's anybody who is equal to it, it's you.
Thank you.
If I remember correctly, like a lot of the lights on Sixth Avenue, a lot of the lights we put in, if there's no cross-traffic, the one, the heavier traffic street can, it just stays green until some car trips a sensor-
That's true. It's called semi-actuated. That's correct, yes. And that's what, that's what you would have to do for an intersection like this. It allows traffic to, let's say the east-west green to remain until there's a call on the side street, so it would not stop people inadvertently along Melgar unless there was somebody on Lawson or whatever intersection you signaledized. That would be correct.
Councilman Rife had a statement or question for you as well.
It kinda flows into what you just talked about. My, my question was gonna be, can you put a stoplight in that area with a bias towards the east-west? So the traffic can still flow, but then you give the people an opportunity at least to pull out and turn and-
And that, that's absolutely what we would have to do. You bet, yeah. Coming up with the timing for what, what you would allow the north-south share would be the trick, and not backing people up so far on the east-west, yes.
Robyn, about how much money roughly is a-
$200,000.
$200,000.
For a signal, yeah.
And how much of the time does the state play a role in funding of those?
Nothing on this.
Zero for those. Okay.
We do, well, we do get funding from the state regarding things, applications we would do for the road. You're putting that into your concrete roadways. We're using that, and our allocation this year was roughly $1 million. So there's, there's always that option of taking a portion of that and using it toward, toward a signal, so.
Councilman Bunstness.
Do we see this happening on South Roosevelt at the Lamont area or 13th or anything on the, on the west side?
It certainly could be another, yes.
Yes, we do.
One of the challenges for the Happy subdivision is there is not another outlet. If there was an outlet to the south of the, the school, of the high school out to Roosevelt, that would provide a lot of relief, I think. With Lamont's, there will be the ability to get up to Roosevelt, or up to Brown County 19, excuse me, or some back, back ways to get out eventually. But to start with, I think you would probably see some of the similar problems. The, probably the challenge though is if it's workforce people that are heading to work out of Lamont's and they're coming onto Roosevelt, they're gonna be heading north, which is the opposing direction from the predominant traffic, you know, 'cause all the kids are going to Central right now, and that's, that's what creates, whether it's along Melgar or whether it's along Roosevelt, the traffic patterns are really strong there, yes.
Sounds good. Well, Robyn, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Abby, thank you for your input. It's good to hear. I've heard a lot of similar concerns from other neighbors of yours as well. Next, we'll move along to the consent calendar items. We've got items A through D, possible approval of those items. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
Moved.
Second.
Councilman Lunsman, motion, second from Councilman Rux. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye or nay? Motion does carry. Next, we move along to the new business. First, we've got authorization for a council member to enter a contract with Aberdeen, possible approval, as I am the actual council member being discussed here. I will turn the baton over to Councilman and, Deputy Mayor, I was searching for that. Assistant is what I was looking for, but that's not right. Deputy, Deputy Mayor Bunstness, who will maintain this discussion and, and host the vote, and then kick it back to me. So with that, Councilman Bunstness.
Thank you. Mayor Shawman requests authorization of the council to submit a proposal by production monkeys to- to Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce for marketing services to develop a new logo and slogan for Aberdeen. And if awarded, the project to enter into a contract with Chamber for such services to be performed in 2020. The Chamber receives a grant from the city as defined in section two dash two A of our, uh, newly adopted ordinance last year. The marketing services contract is anticipated to exceed the prohibited limit of five thousand dollars. Prior to entering into a contract, Mayor Shawnaman requests the council's authorization to derive a direct benefit as permitted by section two dash two F. That reads circumstances under which city council may authorize the mayor or any council member to derive a direct benefit from contract. Subsection one, the city council may authorize a mayor or council member to derive a direct benefit from a contract if the official has provided full written disclosure to the city council of all parties to the contract, the official's role in the contract, the purpose or objective of the contract, the consideration or benefit conferred or agreed to, to be conferred upon each party and the duration of the contract. The city co, or, um, derive a direct benefit, uh, from the contract if the city council finds that the terms of the contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest. In the last subsection, any request for authorization or city council action or our public record. The official minutes shall include any city council action on each request for authorization and shall be filed with the finance officer and city attorney. So Attorney, um, Wager handed out a flow chart that we're going to follow in this discussion. And so, um, the first, uh, uh, point is dealing with subsection A and B that I just read, which is that we will, we must decide if, uh, the written disclosure identifies that all parties to the, there's all parties to the contract. They're requesting council members' role in the contract, the purpose or objective of the contract, the consideration or benefit conferred or agreed to be conferred to each party, the duration of the contract. And then each, uh, voting council member must then consider whether the contract is fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest. So at this time, I will, um, turn it over, back over to, uh, Mayor Shawnaman so he can present his, um, written disclosure.
Thank you, Councilman Bunson. Deputy Mayor. I'm basically here before you to ask for your permission to do work with the Aberdeen Area Chamber of Commerce, a group that I have a thirteen-year, uh, relationship with, successful work in an effort to be fully transparent. Our new conflict of interest policy was enacted to ensure disclosure is provided. And I understand both the desire to eliminate both unfair business deals as well as the appearance of unfair business deals. I want to make sure that everyone here, before they vote, understands. I have no hand in creating this project. I have no say in distributing money to the Chamber of Commerce, who will be paying for this project. I have no say in choosing the winner of this bid. If the Chamber chooses my firm, it will be because we're the best fit for this project based on talent and cost. If you don't allow us to take the project, it will eliminate our bid from contention. And there's a good chance that the money will either go out of town or the Chamber will be forced to spend more money than my bid would have allowed for. Throughout the process of creating this ordinance, I was assured up and down. The spirit of this ordinance is not to stifle business, but it's about disclosure. That's what I'm here to provide. I ask for your vote to allow me to do the work. Thank you.
So do you want to, um, you want to present your written disclosure or so the public has an understanding of the, the elements that we talked about prior?
I'd certainly be happy to. First, we'll start with the contracts. Parties of the contract, myself, Travis Shawnaman, Production Monkeys, my team. Uh, Aberdeen Area Chamber of Commerce is the other person involved or the other entity involved in the contract itself. There will be potential for input from other non-monetary members, including the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Downtown Association and the Development Corporation, who all represent different groups, which would require the same conversation if the contract was with any of them, but none of them are contributing money towards this process. My role in the contract will be the owner of the business seeking the bid, as well as the creative director and designer of the project itself. The consideration for benefit conferred. The line items that requested in the request for proposal are a new logo, a new tagline, logo versions for each community organization, along with their black and white and color counterparts. In a variety of file types, the organizations to be included in this would be the Chamber of Commerce, Aberdeen Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Downtown Association, the Aberdeen Development Corporation and Aberdeen Parks and Rec Department. Brand collateral design, which would include things like business cards, letterheads, envelopes, note cards, trade show pieces, social media graphics, but not limited to those things, as well as brand collateral design, uh, excuse me, brand style guidelines, which outline things like brand colors, fonts, graphic elements and, uh, and the files associated therein, as well as assisting the Chamber of Commerce with the brand launch development. And so all of those things will total, uh, an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Um, that amount has been created by us, uh, carefully reviewing other projects that are similar. And the amount of time spent, our hourly rate is ninety dollars per hour, which is a fraction as much as many out-of-town firms and probably relatively comparable to everyone in our area that provides that service. The duration of the contract will be February twenty-eighth upon selection of the, of the winner as through April thirtieth, which is when the Chamber would like to begin to roll these things out. Um, the one additional thing requested was the purpose or objective of the contract. That's an important one to me and it's near and dear to my heart. I feel like if the city is going to be spending hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars in marketing, it should, it's our responsibility to do it as effectively as possible. I think that a logo is the hat which would, the hat rack with which we hang our, our coat. And that's, and I think that that, the more effective that the logo is, the more effective the advertising will be. And it's our responsible, uh, responsibility to be as effective as possible with that expenditure. Um, I also would like to point out that we have three different city logos, which are currently printed on and used by different various organizations within the city and their departments. And I feel like that is, uh, a poor use of, of brand marketing. And I think that we should work hard to tie that up and make sure that the branding of the city is cohesive and effectively used across all departments, uh, within the city. So I'll be happy to take any questions as it relates to any of these points that I've made. Councilman Ronayn. Nope, sorry. I'm not charged anymore.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess my first question, Travis, is it, is it your understanding that the funds for this project are coming from the monies allocated by the city in the, out of the promotional fund?
I do, and that's why we're here today.
Okay. And so this is the, this is the, the account that they refer to as marketing for the city.
I'm not entirely sure, but I mean, my presumption is if it doesn't come from there, it's coming from other monies of theirs.
Well, actually that's what, I think that's important and that's what I do want to know the answer to. Is this, because, because if this is city money, I have a real problem with it. If this is money that is other Chamber money, um, I think that's a different issue, but that is not something you're, you, you can talk about specifically.
On the other side of that contract, Councilman Ronayn, I wish that I could answer with certainty. But my assumption is it probably is marketing dollars to be used for this.
Okay. The, the second question I've got is, I'm confused by this language, uh, in your written disclosure. And it says, uh, non-monetary consideration from the convention and visitors bureau, Downtown Association and Development Corporation. What, what non-monetary consideration are they?
They'll be asked for their input. So.
Okay. They're not, they're not.
They're not contributing to the.
Right. No. They'll simply offer their guidance if it's requested.
Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Can I have a, a question, follow-up question to Councilmember Ronayn? If, if, um, would you consider it an issue if, so Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce finds other money to pay for the design? But if, well, um, I think I just answered my own question. I mean, if you're, if you're providing card stock and things like that, supplies, that still falls under your, your concern?
Well, I think it does. You know, my, my concern is having us, having a council member, um, on this council, who has the opportunity to vote when we allocate money to these groups. Um, and, and then on the other hand, uh, taking money that, that is actually city money in, in compensation for services. And I have no question about the quality of, uh, of Travis's work and he's, um, and I also know that he, as he points out, uh, you know, he, he does not have a reputation for, for overcharging. I think you get good value. I, I don't question the quality of the work or the, or the value. I just question whether a council member should be receiving what are essentially recycled city dollars in compensation for services. I don't think, I, I don't think we ought to be working for the city, other than what we're paid to be here tonight.
Councilmember Lunsman.
Yeah. After they do this process, Travis, um, is there, uh, funds that would need to be? Would they pay you funds after this or is this strictly one-time deal and then you're, you're done? And whatever logo they pick, you don't get any residual? There's no other contract after that? Or how does this work?
Yep. So this amount is intended to be kind of, you know, kind of inclusive of this entire project. Um, if you look through some of the bullet points, you'll see that, you know, we've went to the great extent of including the collateral design, other advertisements, all kinds of different things. Um, you know, it's, it's possible that there will be future work, but I'd say that this is by far the lion's share. And, you know, we do a relatively minor amount of work with those guys on an annual basis. I think that this will probably kind of give them the kit that they need to move forward with, without additional money to us. Oh, Councilman.
So this process, Travis, just to clarify, we're, we're not awarding you the contract here. We're allowing you to participate in the process of, of being one of the, um, contestants, so to speak, to be awarded the contract. Is that correct?
Well, this would allow me to do the work should I get the bid. So it's not a guarantee that I would get the bid. I'm doing this now as opposed to having been awarded the bid because I think that it would be an uncomfortable conversation with the Chamber for them to have to understand that, hey, you can award it to me. But by the way, then we got to go pitch it to the, uh, to the council. And secondarily, I think that, um, the second point, I can't remember. So that, that, I guess the big part of it. So if I get the project, I'm asking for the ability to do it. I could pitch, I could create this pitch one way or the other, uh, without this approval, but it's a considerable amount of time and energy put into developing these. And I prefer not to do that if I could just be shot down by.
And I would like to supplement, uh, the mayor's comment here. I encouraged him to go to start this process now. He had come and had asked when and whether he should go now. And it was my interpretation and looking at this that we would like to try to provide this early as we can and get the, get the guidance and the authorization if, if that's the direction the council is going as early as we can.
And I guess my other question, a follow-up to that would be, that decision is made by the Chamber. Is that right? Is it the board at the Chamber? They're boarded?
Uh, they had, in the first set of meetings a year ago, they had several, um, of their staff was making a decision alongside of some of the people that represented these other organizations. So I don't know to what extent the board is involved.
Okay.
Councilmember Ruck's.
Um, you know, and I talked to, and I appreciate Mayor Shawnaman calling me, uh, today and on Friday, um, to talk about this. Um, and I was very honest with you that, you know, I don't have a problem if the contract is fair, if it's a good value, uh, for them entering into it. The question I, and I told him this today was, I don't have the information required to make the determination if it was fair. And we have a not to exceed number in here and I understand, uh, Mayor Shawnaman, uh, with his business does not want to give out what the range would be because then someone will undercut. But as it stands now, I can't decide if it's fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest. Cause I don't know what the contract is and I don't know why the Chamber, uh, would have chose him. And, and there's no doubt that, uh, competition could be fierce and there could be minor differences where maybe the one company's maybe a little higher, but maybe offers a little bit more, uh, that type stuff. I, I can understand all that, but for me, I just don't have, I feel the, the information to know if I have, if I get stopped by a constituent, if I can tell them right now why this was a good idea. And, and there is the other thing in that where you can get pre-approval or within, if receiving the contract, you can come with us within fourteen days and then we can decide, decide. And I think the Chamber would not fault anyone for that if someone walked in and said, hey, if you award me this, we're going to have to go through this extra step, but if you guys can justify it, there shouldn't be a problem. And, and that, that to me is what I'm leaning on is I don't have the information to where I could justify it to a constituent if they should ask me, why did you let him do that? If they afterwards, if the contract was the lowest price, the best, best bargain for the, the dollar, I have no problem. I would approve that every day.
Councilmember Ruck's, do you have a question for the mayor or was that your?
That was my speech.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
I wanted to rebut to that because there's a very tight timeframe from the time in which they award to the time this is all considered. So, um, I would say that it, I don't, I mean, you might say that the Chamber won't hold that against a person, but I think that there's almost no question that when we begin to have to have weekly meetings to, uh, to the process, which is already a significant amount of work to be completed in two-month period of time. I think that that will create a deterrence. I think that there's no way around it, whether or not a person will.
We, we meet every week, so if you're awarded a contract on a Thursday, you can get it put on the agenda.
Councilmember Olson.
Is this a time for questions?
Yes. Yes. Questions. Yeah. Sorry.
My question is, here's a question for you. Um, if we approve this and you're awarded a contract, would you bring that information, allow that information to?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
I do have a follow-up question to Councilmember Ronayn. Um, if the mayor wasn't voting on promo funds, would that change your position?
What the ordinance, uh, says is that if, if we've given promotional funds to a group and you have done contract with them, you can't vote on them. The problem that I have is what happens if, uh, if one of us is, is seeking to do some work for somebody that gets promotional funds and we don't get the business? We are then free to vote next time that, that allocation comes up. And, uh, is that going to put one of us in a position where we can punish that group who, who didn't want to do business with us? So, so I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the, with the, I'm uncomfortable with the, with the entire concept because I think it does create not just an appearance of a conflict, and I think the optics are awful. I think it does create a real conflict. I think it puts, uh, I think it puts us in a difficult position. Uh, I think it puts this group that, uh, that is, uh, seeking somebody to do business with them in an awful position.
I have a question for Councilman Ronayn, if I could.
Please.
Please articulate the difference between you doing work for the Development Corporation while on the council with me doing work for the Chamber while the mayor of Aberdeen.
To me, the difference was, uh, first of all, the, uh, the, we did not have this ordinance in place and, and, um, so I think that is one difference. The other difference is Development Corp, um, gets, gets funds from lots of different sources. And we are not the primary source of funding for.
Nor the Chamber.
We are for this fund, Travis. The only money that goes into this fund is our money. It is marketing for the city.
You had to bend over backwards to include the Development Corporation as a group. To me, that says that you believe that there's a conflict there.
Say that again.
The way that the ordinance was written initially would have not included the Development Corporation. You specifically changed the language of the ordinance to include the Development Corporation. Does that not speak to your understanding that there's a conflict between council members and that organization in particular?
Today it would be improper. There is no question about it and it would be, it would be a.
But you created the rule that said that it's improper. It wasn't improper until your rule came into existence.
The only one to do it, you might have remembered. It was an eight to one vote, but.
Uh, okay.
Pardon me?
I'm, I'm going to call order right now. So, um, is there, are there any more questions for Travis?
You said this is a, a short timeline, uh, by what you've given us is February twenty-eighth. Is that the date the contract starts or is that the date to request?
That's the date that they're, they award the contract.
That's the date they award the contract. Okay.
Any more questions?
Yeah, and is the contract then fully, when is that done? Is it the April 30th date here as well? That's the end, that's the end date of the contract?
That's, that's my understanding based on their request for proposal. So I would imagine that there might be some, you know, if there's any flexibility there based on things not hitting deadlines and so forth, but the project is supposed to wrap up then, and that's what would be the summation of the contract.
So roughly 60 to 90 days is what we're talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Any more questions?
All right, we'll move on to seeking a motion to authorize Mayor Shoneman pursuant to Aberdeen City Code, Section 2-2, subsection F, to derive a direct benefit from a marketing services contract with Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce for rebranding the city of Aberdeen. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Councilmember Rife. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second for a conversation.
Seconded by Councilmember Rux. Discussion.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rife?
Sure. I think as a citizen, and also a member of the council, I think it makes sense in this process that we get more options available to the chamber versus less. I think the more options you have of qualified options, the better off we'll all be. Secondly, not just this issue, I struggle with what this does to the city council. If I'm a small business owner and I see this, and we say, well, you can still operate your business and do business with these entities as long as you do all the disclosures and toe the line and provide what you're supposed to provide, and then it happens, and then we still, and still the answer is no. So if I'm a small business owner, I'm going to look at this and say, well, I'm just better off not representing my district because it could potentially hurt my business, hurt my employees, hurt the way I earn a living. And in terms of, if this taints the city council somehow, or if this makes us look, I don't know, somehow biased or whoever, I don't, I'm struggling to see the crime here. We say it might not be fair, might not be reasonable. Well, can't the board of the chamber determine that through their process? And they're going to have a lot of people looking at these options. So to me, the fair and the reasonable part will be determined, and we can, we can look at this and say, 18,000, that's a lot of money. But if it is a lot of money, he won't be selected. And the board at the chamber is made up of business owners, it's made up of a lot of different people in the community, that the mayor isn't going to have a lot of sway over regardless. And we go to the fact that, well, he could hurt them on the promotional dollars. Well, we all vote on the promotion dollars. One person can't shut anybody out, as we've seen in the past. There's been times when people have tried to zero out other organizations, and it didn't happen because we all vote. So I just don't see the problem with this. And in my mind, from a citizen and from a city council member, I would be excited to have the mayor of the city have, play a role in the branding and marketing of our city. To me, that makes a lot of sense. His job role over the next four and a half years is going to be a lot of talking about this branding and this advertising. We want to promote new businesses in Aberdeen. We want to bring visitors here. And to have the mayor be a part of that process, even if he's not selected, but to have the mayor be a part of that process, to me, is a win. I mean, I don't, I don't see the negativity here. I don't understand. So I would certainly vote in favor.
Councilmember Olson.
Well, I think everyone knows my position on this. We had a thorough discussion last year concerning these promotional funds. And to me, it certainly creates an influence that is not right. And it creates a situation in our, in the public's eye that something about this doesn't look right. It isn't criminal. Certainly, it isn't criminal, but we're elected to be fair and impartial for all of the decisions we make for the city of Aberdeen. It affects businesses, it affects families, it affects neighborhoods, all of our decisions. And when we, as a council, decide on who gets marketing dollars, because we do, we decide, okay, the chamber gets this much, this group gets that much, and then we turn around, the same group turns around and authorizes one of our own members to get some of that money. I'm sorry, that's not right. That is just not right. And I'm just against that. I know we allowed by ordinance for council members to earn up to 5,000. Well, let's limit it to that then. If that's what we authorized by ordinance, then we should stick by it.
Some people know my thoughts because I didn't read a list of subsections real carefully on step two, subsection two. And going to Josh's, Josh's point, and I think that when we sit here and have these discussions, it does at least allow us to know different sides, which is why I second it, because I want to hear your side just as much as anything else. Is this a proper thing to do? I am maintaining at this point, I cannot justify this to the people who might ask because I don't know. And yes, the chamber is selecting it, but they don't have to take the lowest bidder. They could take the highest bidder if they wanted to. We have no control over that process, and yet it is money that we procure to them solely for marketing of the city. So it is one of those things that we have to really think. State law in this is to protect the taxpayer funds to allow that no one can take advantage of a city. And now, would I think it would happen in this point? Probably not. But I'm not sitting in that process. We have no one involved in this process to know how this process is being handled and what are the criteria. And like I said before, if I had the contract and the chamber said this is why we chose him, and then I can go back to when people ask and say, this is why he was the best one for the job, I can justify that. I can't with the information ahead because he hasn't been awarded the contract yet. And unfortunately, that's the paradigm we have here, where we were given them approval to enter into a contract that hasn't been awarded, and we have no information about except for what could be in the contract. And to me, that's, it's like a cart before the horse type thing. So it's, if I knew what it was that we were approving, I could then make a much more informed decision as to what it is. But I appreciate your comments. Like I said, I'm not opposed to it. If it was the best deal, the best price, and we got all the bang for the buck, and it was a person on this council doing it, I'd never have any qualms with it. So, because that's what, that's what state law wants to protect.
So I am not trying to protect anyone on this council, but I think the back and forth that just happened between the mayor and Councilmember Ronain, you know, I was, I was probably a central figure in bringing the language that we have in the ordinance right now. And obviously, the outside entities was language that was accepted by all of us. And so I think to some degree, it's, because it, it's not fair to be pointing fingers at someone that they had a conflict, I had a conflict. I've, you know, you know my story, so I just, I just wanted to bring that up first. My question to the council is, this language that was brought forward that school districts follow had a subsection that we're dealing with tonight. So is there any time that we can see that a council member or a mayor can fall underneath this subset, this section 2-2F, that they can derive, we can give permission that they can derive a direct benefit? Because we all voted on this language, and I'm just curious on what, if we're going to be, if I wanted to be a hardliner on conflict of interest, I would have never included the language in the first place. So what situations, what promo funds that we give out will be acceptable to this council? Anyone have any thoughts on that? Councilmember Ronain.
You know, I did have a conversation with the mayor probably a month ago, and he brought up a hypothetical client of his, and that he would be coming to us asking for permission to continue to work with that entity. And it was an entity that does receive promo money from us, but it receives millions of dollars from other sources. And the money isn't in a segregated fund. We are funding a building project. We're not likely to vary our contribution over the years. I don't, to me, that is an entirely different animal. I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the problem with that type of, of a client that I do with one that is really just administering our, our money. That, that one just scares me. So I could see other instances where I at least could support that. I've had this conversation with Councilman Olson, and I don't think he and I see eye to eye on that, but, but I, but I see situations that I could approve it.
Anyone else?
I also see situations, like I said, if he would put in the request for proposal, we ordered the contract, and we had the information that he was the lowest price, the best value, and I can justify it, I'd seriously take a very good, hard look at it because that, I feel, is the intent of what the state legislature have is, is to protect the taxpayer dollars and provide the best value for those dollars. And if someone on this council is able to provide that, I, again, I can justify that to those who may ask, that this was the lowest price, the best value. So I've never shut off from that, and situations change, and things may change, so to sit there, and I'm, I've probably been a little more flexible on the council. I don't take a hard line on each issue. So like I say, that's my thing right now, is he hasn't been awarded the contract, we're still trying to fill in a lot of blanks as to what it could be or who would get chosen. And like I say, I have no problems if he was awarded the contract, and he came back with a letter from the chamber on why he was chosen, and the cost of it, with the breakdown of why he was given that with the other costs, I'd have no problem with it.
Is another way of asking this, why do we have 2-2F? If he's going to follow it, the letter of what it says, and we're going to come to the conclusion that, well, the money's not segregated, or we don't know exactly, either we need to add more language to 2-2F, or, I mean, I don't, I don't understand what's in here now that would kick this request out as it reads.
Well, I sit there and look at it as, let's say, they aren't going to a request for proposal, and he was awarded a contract, let's say, more out of a professional services type thing, and it was an entity that received taxpayer dollars. That may be where he could get pre-approval. I'm going to enter into this. This is one of those where the contract hasn't been awarded yet, and there's that other 2-2-2F where after receiving a contract, he has 14 days to gain approval from the contract, from the council. So there's two different parts to that that I think play into two different ways that a lot of taxpayer dollars are distributed. One is through maybe not, no bid, or a professional services type thing where I'm going to get this job because, let's say, computer services. I'm going to get this job because I'm the only one in this area that can fix this computer. Can I get a computer approval for it? And then there's another one where I'm going to put in for a contract, I'm going to get a contract, I got the contract, and now I need approval to enter into the contract.
Anything else from anyone else? Councilmember Lunsman.
I've been sitting here listening to everybody, and I see Travis's predicament, and I want the best for the city. I think everybody sitting here does, just because of everybody's opinion. And I do want the best logo for the city. There's no doubt about that. Where I come down to is kind of a combination of what's been said already, is the fact that right now, the money appears to be coming strictly from an account that we fund, and we alone fund, and that's a problem for me. Same way as anytime, like the Aberdeen Convention and Visitors Bureau, we fund them by all our money too. Now, they're not involved with this, I get that, but I'm talking in general with Dave's question, is that when we are, the predominant amount of money that's going to be spent on this becomes a problem for me. Because we've seen it in the past, and maybe it's because of my business also, there's a fine line between teared on one side of the fence or the other. Good intentions end up falling down on the wrong side of bad intentions, or bad results, I should say. And, you know, I, I see it, Travis, but I have a hard time with where the money's coming from. I really do at this point, and I, I can't support, with the information we have today, can't support it today.
Man?
Councilmember Johnson.
I think there has been a lot of really excellent input here, and just weighing the different factors. I feel that Travis has done a very good job of bringing his proposal forward. He has met the standard or the expectations of some item, one A and B, with the exception of, we're allowed to be discerning here and at our discretion decide if this is or isn't contrary to the public interest. And I think that's where some of the dichotomy maybe, or some of the divisions that we have. And so it is important to realize that this is a unique contract, a potential contract that would be pulling from specific marketing funds. And I too feel that there could be opportunities. I don't want the mayor to feel like the door is being closed. I feel that we should give an open hearing each time he may come forward in the future. This one is somewhat unique. I think that's been touted by Councilman Lunsman and Ronain most specifically, but, you know, it's laudable that he's making the effort. It's, I think that his rates and his performance will be, you know, at the exceptional level. And I think if there are cases where we can encourage that, then we should. But in my own mind, I'm not sure that this is one of those times.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we'll ask Carl for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
No.
Ronain?
No.
Lunsman?
No.
Rife?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Olson?
No.
Rux?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bunsoness?
No. Motion fails. So this shall be included in the minutes of next week's meeting, and a copy will be filed with the finance officer and the city attorney. Trav, Mayor Shoneman?
Let's move along to the request to purchase a 2020 Dodge Ram 2500 Traceman Crew Cab 4x4 pickup from the Aberdeen Chrysler Center for the fire department. Possible approval to purchase the pickup and for the Chrysler Center, the amount of $34,900 for the fire department. Fire Chief Randy is here to tell us about the truck.
Excuse me. This pickup will be our new command vehicle. Our current command vehicle is being used, it was loaned by the airport, so we'll give that back. And our other vehicle. that we're gonna, it's a 2003 Yukon with 140,000 miles on it, so we wanna kinda, it's not roadworthy to take it to training, so our current command vehicle will be turned into our support vehicle. So we're kinda playing musical vehicles here, so.
Move, go approve.
Second. Got a motion from Councilmember Ronain, and a second from Councilmember Rux. Carl, would you give us a roll call?
Chief, wasn't this included in your budget, though? Absolutely. Yep, this was--
Does anyone else have any questions for the chief minister? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of bill list for February 3rd, 2020. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson, and a second from Lunsman. Carl, give us a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Abstain.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the managers' report. Lynn, tell us about what you've got.
I have one quick item I'd like to make reference to that was within the packet, and that was the notice from the U.S. Department of Transportation that we received on January 29th, 2020. And basically, they select the SkyWest once again to provide essential air service to the city of Aberdeen, and that contract will run from March 1st of 2020 to February 28th, 2022.
Thank you very much. Lynn, does anyone have anything before we adjourn? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Adjourned, we've got a motion--
Second.
--from Bunstness, and a second from Councilmember Ronain. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.